So I am going to call the meeting to order. And welcome, everyone that's here this evening. Sorry. We just have those in the hallway. And also those that are watching later on on YouTube. So first order of business, just a reminder, if you have cell phones, electronic devices, turn them on airplane mode or off or on silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. And second, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with that, I'll make a, I'll start out with a few introductions. We have, we're going to start at that far end tonight. Sitting in for Chief Falls is Lieutenant Sergeant, thank you, Patrick Cummings. Thank you for being here, nice to have you. And then we have our city attorney, Ron Beatty, with Kennedy and Graven. Then we have our community development director, David Abel, our finance director, Brian Grimm. And next to me, we have our city administrator, Mike Barone. I am Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor. And next to me, we have council members, Pam Mortensen, Mike Molliter, John Chomperlin, absent this evening, is Shannon Bruce. And then on the end, we have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Fousky, our city clerk, Chris Lindquist. Next to her, behind Chris, we have Cassandra Tabor, who is Director of Administration. And then joining us shortly will be our public work superintendent, Gary Peters. And then also, we have Adam Gabois with us, also with WSB Engineering. So with that, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, then, is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Chomperlin. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. We don't have any special presentations this evening. I don't see anybody here signed up for persons to be heard, so we will move on to our consent agenda items. Are there any items you need to remove? Otherwise, they will consist of approve our work session meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2019, approve the regular meeting minutes from September 3rd, 2019, a resolution to approve claims, a resolution to approve change orders two and three for Lotus Drive improvements, City Project 0418, and then a resolution to approve a wet land replacement plan on the Dakota Rail Trail for Three Rivers Park District. That is A, B, C, D, and E. So a motion to approve those consent agenda items.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A second has been made. Motion was made by Mr. Chomperlin and seconded by Ms. Mortensen. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. Next, we have our public hearing. We have two public hearings this evening. Both are for temporary one-day on-sale liquor licenses, one for the Northwest Tonka Lions and one for the Mount West Tonka Rotary. Ms. Lindquist, I believe that is you.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, would you like me to do them both at the same time and then just vote on them separately?
I, yeah, that's fine. Yeah. Sounds good.
Northwest Tonka Lions and the West Tonka Rotary both have submitted applications to host fundraising events for respective, fundraising events, I guess. Okay, so maybe I should do them separately. The Lions will be hosting the Weekend Wine Fest, which will be October 5th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Voyager Environmental Center. Again, this is a fundraising event to, for, for the weekend organization. They did a, they applied similarly, to a similar license last fall. Think that's it for that one. For the West Tonka Rotary, they're hosting the Tonka Brew Fest event, and that will be November 2nd, from 3:00 to 6:00 at Gales Woods Farm. And this is a fundraising event for the Rotary Club of Mount West Tonka. Again, they did a similar event last year. With the Tonka Brew Fest, it has been supported by the city of Minutista in the past, and we are a sponsor of this event. In previous years, the council has waived their $40 administration fee. Staff is recommending doing that again this year. It was published in the papers, and it was posted and mailed to neighbors within 500 feet. I received no comments for either one of them. One thing, they both did pass their background check, and I will be, they both have special events permits, and I will be sending it off to the alcohol and gambling for final approval.
Okay.
So we'll need to open the public hearing, but we can do that respectively for both of them.
Okay. So I will do that. We don't have anybody here, but officially, I have to do that. We're going to open the public hearing, and if there's anybody here that wishes to speak for or against, or have comments regarding these two temporary one-day on-sale liquor licenses for the Northwest Tonka Lions and Mount West Tonka Rotary, you may do so at this time. There is nobody here, so I'm going to close the public hearing. I just have one request for the council consideration. The Northwest Tonka Lions are hosting this event as a Weekend fundraiser, and Weekend is a service organization here in, in the West Tonka area, and they help people that are in need of financial help and, and social help, basically. And they do service a lot of our residents, some of our residents as well. And I'm just wondering if we could extend to them the same courtesy as the Mount West Tonka Rotary by waiving the $40 permit application fee. It'd be a huge amount, but...
I think it would be a nice gesture, and they do incredible things in the community.
I would support that.
Okay. So would you need a motion to that effect to?
Yeah, we can just include that in the motion for the one-day permit. We'll just, like we have for the Lion, excuse me, for the Rotary Club, we have in there that, that we are waiving the fee. So you can just include that in your motion.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the temporary one-day liquor licenses for both these organizations with the caveat that both organizations will be awarded a reprieve, if you will, of the $40 application fee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Ms. Mortensen make that motion, and Mr. Molliter seconded that. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. Thank you. So next, we'll move on to our business items. First is approving for the prepayment and redemption of the city's general obligation improvement refunding bond, Series 2017B. Mr. Grimm?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, and I think, yeah, I'll, I'll be taking these next couple items. And there's also Chris Mickelson from Ellers this year, but I think he'll be speaking more to the third item with the refinancing of the 2010A bonds, which we'll get to in a couple items here. But this first item has to deal with the Series 2017B bonds, which ultimately were, originally are bonds that funded the Roundabout project in association with the Woodland Cove Development. I think we had talked in August at one of the work sessions, we were talking budget and levy discussions, that the developer had let myself know that they were looking at paying off the assessments, and this, that project was 100% paid for through special assessments to the Woodland Cove LLC or Carlson Real Estate Group, and they did ultimately pay those off in late August. So now, this motion would basically call the rest of the bonds that are outstandingly to be paid, when we had done these bonds back originally in 2014 or '13. They were structured to be callable at any time. So this motion, or resolution, would be to call the bonds and make, make them payable by November 1st, and we would pay them off with those funds we received for the assessment.
Have you received those funds yet?
Yes.
Okay, so we have them sitting in the bank?
Yep, yeah, correct.
Okay.
So we got those in late August, so they're here and ready to, and basically, just with the logistics of calling the bonds, the November 1st date seemed to be attainable to get that ready, to structure to pay off and get those off the books, I guess.
Okay. Is the, is this bond, there's one of them, there's a number of here, so there's one that had, there was $660,000 that the city funded, I believe, through sewer and water?
Yeah, that'll be the next.
The next one, okay.
This one was the one that was, yeah, the Roundabout was...
Oh, this is the Roundabout, I'm sorry. Yep, okay. All right. Do you have questions?
So, is, do we have a legal obligation within the bond issuance to, to pay these off because of, they've been paid early?
I don't know if we have a...
I don't think so.
Legal obligation. I think it's just now that the funds are available, and they would, they would just be sitting in that debt service fund, I guess, the...
Why wouldn't you pay them?
Well, okay, not, I'm not advocating we don't, but what I'm thinking about is, we've talked about in the past, to alleviate some of our cash flow issues with road financings, that we would do interfund loan from one of the other funds. As an alternative to that, or maybe in addition to that, is rather than using these funds to pay off the debt, we've already got the debt outstanding, to use some or all of them towards future road projects and leave the bond issu, it would save us some bond issuance costs, and I already have the cash there. I realize, you know, of course, what we have right now, perhaps not, but it was just a thought that I had, that perhaps rather than just automatically paying them off, we use the funds for other road construction. Would alleviate some of our cash flow concerns.
Yeah, I see, I see your point. I mean, obviously, by paying them off, we'd avoid any future interest.
What's the balance on this one?
The $2,560,000.
And what's the payment on it? Because then, see, we'd be...
Right, but I mean, it'd just be, and again, it doesn't have to be, it probably doesn't have to be all or nothing either.
Right.
You could pay off some of the bonds, and, and I'm just thinking about, you know, we've expressed some concerns on cash over the last few meetings about how we optimize our use, and this is just one potential way to do it. I, I'm fully supportive of this approach if we want to do that, but I think it's something we probably should consider, that if we don't, I realize we're going to be paying interest on it, but we don't pay off, but it may be a relatively low cost way to fund our, the city's half of road projects for next year or two.
So what is the interest, then? I mean, just out of curiosity? Do you know? Mr. Mickelson, do you have him to know?
I don't have that schedule on.
Okay.
No, I mean, it's something that I could certainly get to the city tomorrow, but...
Mm-hmm. It's, I mean, I, I get what you're saying, and I think we'd have to find out what, how much, one, we would want to keep, and then what is the interest on it?
I don't know, is it something we want to explore? Because, I mean, there's nothing, you know, I think you put November 1st, it's because of what we need to do administratively, but I don't think there's anything magical about that date. If we said we want to do December 1st, I think that'd be an option, or do it on a yearly basis.
Correct, yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, there's no time sensor, rather than, yeah, I think we're, our next, I think this is on a February-August semi-annual payment schedule or whatever, so that would be where the, the timing would come in. Yeah, I guess, um...
I mean, I guess, we'd have to, I, I'd like to know how much we would keep for that purpose, what the interest rate is, what our payment would be, you know, there's a lot of...
Well, yeah, interest rate and driving...
Yeah, to me, I guess, these bonds, I mean, interest rates have pretty much been on a downward decline over the last several years, that if we had to go up, you know, to me, I don't, I think the rates on these would be higher than anything we do now, I believe, because that's why we're...
Right, but I think, what I'm saying here is, the issue we've had is, we haven't had a, a critical mass to be able to issue bonds cost-effectively. And so, I wouldn't, you know, I think we're talking 2.13 million here, approximately.
Or this, this...
But whatever, it's, it's well over a million. I wouldn't advocate that we would, you know, use all of that, because you're right, that if, if we had 2 million to use in other roads, I'd say, yeah, go ahead and call these out, and we'll reissue new ones at a lower rate. But if we only needed, you know, if we're looking at a next-year project of 600,000, and we need 300,000, and we don't have the cash, you know, do we hold 300 out of here? You might pay a little bit more, and maybe we bundle that going forward. I'm just trying to think of, kind of, address some of the concerns we've had before.
I'd, I'd rather take it out of a cup, there's some other funds we could borrow it from, and we've talked about the Tree Fund borrowing from that fund. There's about 350,000 in that fund, so if we borrowed it from there, that might be a better way to go. There's other, there's the Park Dedication Fund, we could borrow on a short-term basis, something, or, you know...
With a better interest rate.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, I think, just going forward, we probably should be cognizant.
Sure, I mean...
I mean, I think it's been a good practice, I certainly don't have any issue with that. But just as we change a little bit how we finance our roads, we might want to give some consideration that if we get early payments in, it may not always be the best thing to pay off the bonds, if we can use the cash for something else. But if we want to pay these down, I do not object.
Okay.
Just want to throw it out there.
I do appreciate your creativity, though.
Yes, yes. It's, yeah, it is, very good. All right. So, good question. Any other discussion? Always good to have different ideas, so. So is there, then, a motion to approve providing for the prepayment and redemption of the city's general obligation improvement refunding bond, Series 2017B?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Ms. Mortensen and seconded by Mr. Molliter. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. So next, we're approve resolution providing for the prepayment and redemption of a portion of the city's taxable general obligation bond, Series 2017C. And this is for Kings Point Road.
Correct.
Where there's 660,000 still outstanding that the city would still owe.
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and Council, so, yeah, this is on page, starts on page 109 of your packet, and this was the ones, we actually issued them as taxable general obligation refunding bonds, this Series 2017C, I think they originally levied back in, in 2014 and refinanced once already. The developer, as stated with the earlier agenda item, did make the payments of their assessments, and basically, there's 2,135,000 left of the bonds. The, what was the assessable portion was what we're looking to partially call the 1,475,000. The other remaining 660,000 would stay out there and be paid through water and sewer funds, you know, utility portion of the project. So, as with that, you know, previous agenda item, you know, these were set up to be called at any time, either in full or a portion, and in this case, you know, we would make the recommendation, obviously, to do the portion, seeing the, the city portion, I don't think it, why, we wouldn't want to look to pay that down right now, we got, we got, the matching revenue was on the, the assessments that just came in here, you know?
The 1, 1.475.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, I had, just was wondering, you know, did, would we want to pay off the 660,000? But I think in lieu of Mr. Molliter's comments and, and kind of what we're looking at for possible interfund loans, we probably wouldn't, because then we would be using up our cash in our sewer and our water funds.
And the rate's still there is at a, you know, a good rate, you know, not probably quite as low as we'd get right now, but it's still, it's still a good rate.
So is the city's portion of this, 660,000, is that on some type of set amortization schedule, or is that just?
Yes, that, that is on a...
Payment, yeah.
Is it, what, are that 20 years? Do you know?
Yeah, there's, so I think, yeah, it was originally a 20-year, but here now, it's got, less years from the original. Yeah, oh, correct, yep.
So we would just, and this comes out of the sewer and water fund, yeah?
Right, right. Yeah, I think if we didn't have a water tower project staring at us, we don't consider that, but...
Right. Yeah, that's, that's, I kind of looked at it, and I thought, well, should we pay it off, or, you know, my, but I agree, if, if it wasn't for the water tower. Now, my only question is, when we do the water tower, maybe we could look at what, if, if we could benefit from rolling the 660 into that, or refinancing it if we get a much better rate? I don't know.
The only thing that would be different on this one is, the water tower, we would issue as a tax exempt bond again.
Oh, okay.
Because with the 10 million bank qualification we get each year, but this had, this, back in the day was, ended up being a taxable GO bond, based on the amount of debt we were issuing at the time and such, so...
Okay.
And we're still able to get a really competitive interest rate, but this could not be combined in with another issuance such as the water tower.
Okay, all right.
It could be looked at, I guess, separately, when we look at that, you know, we'll be looking at financing that in, you know, January, February, shortly after the first of the year, one, as long as the water tower project moves forward.
Yeah.
You know, and gets to construction, et cetera, you know.
Right, and to your point of that, if we get, when we get to the water tower discussion, we may, you know, we've talked about using some cash for that.
Right.
Perhaps instead, we use some of that cash to pay it this off, and do a higher loan on the water tower.
Correct, that could be looked at, though.
Right, that's, and we can look at that as we get closer, then, right. Yeah, and that's, that was another option. Okay. So is there, then, a motion? Any other questions or comments? Okay, is there a resolution providing for the prepayment and redemption of a portion of the city's taxable general obligation refunding bond, Series 2017C?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Chomperlin and seconded by Mr. Molliter. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. So next, and I think this is where I have a number of questions. So this is approve a resolution providing for the sale of the 1,430 general obligation refunding bonds. So you want to refinance these?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Madam Mayor and Council, so, yeah, this starts on page 113 of your packet, and I guess, one thing I'll probably point out right off the bat, just in case the memo wasn't clear, is that, that $46,000 to $50,000 savings range, that was net of any issuance cost, you know, gross savings is...
Okay.
100,000 some, the issuance cost was 50,000, and this would be the, what the city would, you know, save in, in net, you know?
Okay.
So I just wanted to clarify that, and that, you know, as per the, the memo there, you know, it's estimated right now to be about a 3.4% savings, and I can, you know, maybe let...
Okay.
And that's a total savings, not an annual?
Correct, that's, yeah, that'd be a total, yep. So, yeah, I don't know if, maybe, Mr. Mickelson?
Mr. Mickelson? Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Again, my name is Chris Mickelson with Ellers and Associates. My colleague Todd Hagan is the city's primary advisor, although he was double booked this evening, so he asked if I could pinch-hit for him, and I'm happy to be here in front of you all. So as you likely have in front of you, the pre-sale report for this proposed issue, 1,430,000 general obligation improvement refunding bonds, what we're calling 2019A Series. I can certainly go through each of these piece by piece, or if there's any other questions that you may have right off the bat, I can, I can, you know, address those. Do you have a preference, one way or another?
I think it, I think if we just have questions, unless you want him to go through everything piece by piece?
I think questions would be fine, yeah, it was, it was attached in the packets.
Right. So my, my question had been, and Mr. Grimm, I think, answered it. When I looked at this in the packet, it showed a, it said the underwriter's discount, 17,160, and then it said cost of issuance, 39,000. So that, that came up to 56,000, and then it said that we had a 50,000, approx. 40 to, 45 to 50,000 savings, and I'm like, well, well, wait a minute, that doesn't add up.
Yeah, you wouldn't do it.
If you're, yeah, 56 to do it, and then, so, as long as the 45 to 50,000 is what we actually will gain after those expenses.
Sure.
That's much better.
So a few comments on that. The first is the underwriter's discount, so that's what an underwriter pays themselves for making this market. This will access the national bond market, like sales that you guys have had in the past, and so that's a component of these competitive sales, is, is this underwriter's discount. Cost of issuance, that's our fee, as well as the bond attorney's fee, and then standard and poor's fee, that's all built into that, $39,000 estimate. And then, as it relates to the savings, that savings estimate, which you'll see on this page of your packet, so you will definitely see comparison, what we call the future value savings, that's that $50,476 estimate. The present value savings estimated at $45,970, and that makes a 3.428% estimated savings. That's relative to the interest rate that's assumed on the previous page for this new bond issue, and right now, that's estimated at 2.07%, although I will say that that has 20 basis points of cushion in it. And so, what that says is, if the bond sale happened today, this would likely be closer to 1.8 or so percent, 1.85, 1.87%.
At what point will we know what that is?
On the, on the day of sale.
I mean, approximately, timing-wise, when would that happen?
I think that was, there's a schedule on page 119.
Yeah, so I can speak to that, too. That's, that's on page five of the pre-sale report.
And that date is?
Pardon me?
And that date is?
That date is October 21st.
Thank you.
Is the sale date.
Thank you.
And the council would award that even.
Yeah, okay. All right. October 21st, okay. That's after our meeting, though, isn't it?
That should be our, our second meeting of...
Is that our second?
The sale would take place...
The third Monday of the...
Oh, the 7th, the 7th, and then the 21st, yeah.
And the council would award that even.
Okay, all right.
So we'd get the results that morning, and then either, yeah, Mr. Hagan or one of the other, you know, representatives would be here to present it that night, and hopefully it's better than that 3.4%, you know? We wouldn't do it if it was, if it gets to be less than that 3%, we'd just pull that and say it's not worth doing it. I think there's some statutory requirements that says it's got to be at least 3% more.
If it was an advanced refunding, it would be statutorily required to save at least 3%, but with the current refunding, there isn't that 3% goal, but if it doesn't achieve that, we wouldn't recommend it.
Still a good guideline, even with all the statutory requirements.
Does this extend the life or the timeframe? It does not?
It's 12 years. It's 12 years if you leave the old bonds out, it's 12 years if you refund with the new ones.
Okay, all right.
So I think I got the answer to the question, but I think, my question was, at what level do we kind of consider this? And you're, you know, because we're looking at about a $50,000 savings here, you're looking at a percent, you said about 3%, that's kind of what your threshold is?
Yeah, yeah, you hope for four or five, you know, or better, you know?
Right.
But three is at least the floor, or whatever, to, and I think we've done some, by paying, this is the one where we had paid down some last...
Right.
February, or I guess February this year, so I think there, we were able to save some interest, you know, by paying it down, and this is just another opportunity, I think, when I talked with Mr. Hagan on the phone, he said, with it being close to the call date, this is still a good opportunity to, to do it based on interest spreads and all that financial advisor, I guess, you know?
Right, I just, I just want to make sure we're not, you know, it's like, you've got to have some, you know, I don't want you chasing this down for 10,000 bucks.
Right.
Yeah.
A point on that topic is the, so we're approaching the call date now, and the further you get past that call date, the less and less savings there are, because now you have fewer and fewer maturities to be refunding.
Yeah, right.
And so the argument there is, you know, your savings basically go away as time...
As time progresses, yeah. All right. Okay, good. All right, so what is your wish? Approve the resolution providing for the sale of 1,430 general obligation improvement refunding bond, Series 2019A. This would be refunding or refinancing of the 2010A bonds.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Molliter made that motion, and Ms. Mortensen seconded that. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes for all. Before you go, I do have a question on conduit bonds. And recently, I was at a meeting, and Medina actually just issued, or I'm not sure what the correct term is, but they took on a $10 million conduit bond, and I think that they said that it was like 65, it was 10 million, but the underwriting, again, I'm not sure on the term, was...
You're on the right course.
Okay, was 65...
It was 50 basis points.
Okay, 50 basis point. I thought it was 65.
50,000.
50,000. So, and that's free money to them. Is that every year? It's one-time?
It's a one-time, it's a one-time cost that is built into the transaction, that the underwriter gets paid.
Okay.
It's their compensation for buying the bonds, and then finding the various end investors that will hold those bonds. That's the really nice thing about a competitive sale, is that underwriter's discount is built into the estimates, and the less underwriter's discount that an underwriter takes, the more competitive their interest rate is, the lower their interest rate is. And so, underwriters will typically take less than what is allowed for them to take. So in this transaction, in the presale estimate, we're allowing 1.2%, 1.2% of underwriter's discount. I'm not sure what the underwriter will ultimately take, but oftentimes, it is significantly less than that, because again, the more of that they take, that's an interest item, it adds their total cost up, and then they're less competitive relative to those other bidders.
But what I'm getting at is, I think, what I'm, I guess, asking is, it seems to me like maybe we should be looking at something like that, because I think it goes against your debt just for the year in which it was issued, and then after that, it's gone? I mean, it doesn't go against your debt?
Medina, that was a Bloomington project. Cities are limited to $10 million for bank-qualified debt every year. If you don't use it, it goes away. Medina did not issue any debt this year, so it was able, in conjunction with St. Paul Park and Independence, to issue enough debt to fund the project in Bloomington. And what you're getting at is, there's a fee that's payable to the city for doing that, and it's negotiable. Deal the city did last year was at 65 basis points, slightly smaller principal amount. This year was the full 10 million at 50 basis points, so that's $50,000 of free money to the city.
And do you have to have the 10 million in the bank?
No, no, you just, it didn't work here, because you were going to be issuing other debt.
Okay.
You know.
So you can't issue any debt? Not even, not even the equipment certificates?
They wanted the full 10 million.
They were trying to fund a big project, so they wanted...
They wanted blocks and 10 million.
It's advantageous to deal with as few cities as possible.
Sure.
So that the, the more you have available, the more attractive you are. Medina had the full 10 million.
Okay.
Independence had less, and St. Paul Park had less as well.
So, I just want to keep that open, because it's a cash flow thing for the city, free money. So, I know next year, we're going to be issuing debt for the water tower, so it might not work, but in the future, let's keep that in the back of our minds.
You're basically, in that case, using the borrowing capacity of the city on behalf of another city.
Correct.
Correct, yeah.
And if we would want to explore it, or do it, which I'm not against, I think if we know we're not going to do anything in a year, which, I mean, you know, the water tower thing was moving along and stuff, so we really weren't sure whether it's going to be 19 or 20, or whatever, but we probably would want to have maybe even just a simple policy that says the city council is in favor of allowing that, when it works for certain years or whatever.
Well, now, could you issue some debt?
So in a year like this, you could do 8.5 million of bank-qualified conduit bonds.
Right.
IRS tax code allows the city to issue 10 million in any given year of bank-qualified bonds.
Right.
And this issue is taking, you know, just under 1.5 million of that capacity. So that would leave an additional 8.5 million of that bank-qualified capacity. The reason why, and you can certainly do, you know, taxable bonds, you can do tax-exempt bonds that are non-bank-qualified, but in the world of municipal bonds, the lowest possible borrowing cost is tax-exempt, bank-qualified.
And you would want bank-qualified, just for...
All else being equal, if you can achieve VQ, you want.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, keep it open. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, we move on to accept quotes and award the contract for the Kings Point Road Water Main and Street Repair. Lee, this is Ms. Fowski.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening is, for consideration, is to award a contract to, in this case, we're looking at Parrot Contracting for the repair of the Kings Point Road Water Main and the associated street repair costs. Quote package was submitted to five contractors for this work, and we had three contractors indicate that they were too busy to quote on the work. They were thankful for us asking them, but they were unable to submit a quote. So, two quotes were received. One thing that the council is seeing in the quote package, we did issue an addendum to this quote package. The reason being is, after we had council authorization to proceed with getting quotes, we had some discussion, a really good discussion with the Public Works Department with regards to how this water system works. And we've, what we, what we found out is that while the quote package, as originally approved, would work, it would require using well 5 to feed the system. And the issue with using well 5, while it meets all of the drinking water standards, there is, I believe it's a color issue with using that. So not only do you introduce a colored water into the system during the repair, but also after the repair is made and the system's brought all back online, that system remains, that colored water would remain in there. And I believe the last time, when the original temporary repair was done, Public Works ended up flushing that out. So, from a systematic standpoint, we wanted to include an addendum, and that's included so that it's at council's discretion as to whether or not that would be awarded, to put in a valve at a location that would allow Public Works to valve it off and not have to utilize that well 5 as a backup. So, with that, we did get two quotes, as shown in your packet, for the base bid, that's the work that the council had authorized at the prior council meeting. And then we also have that alternate, which is for that valve work, which we are recommending, awarding, so that we could have a system improvement that would help from a maintenance standpoint for our Public Works Department. Parrot Contracting and Mingar Contracting both submitted quotes, summarized in your packet this evening, with Parrot Contracting being the low, the low quote on this, for a total with base and the alternate of $93,523. This is higher than what we were estimating. We were originally, originally, we were looking at about $70,000 just for the repair, which was, you know, within 10% of the base bid. And once we had that quote package prepared, we thought we could get about approximately $65,000 was the opinion of probable cost. But as I indicated earlier, with the current climate that's out there right now with these contractors, and with three contractors being too busy to even submit a quote on this, we saw some higher prices than we were anticipating, so. As I mentioned, we are recommending awarding the quote to Parrot Contracting, and I would be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Okay, questions? How long will they, so, if we go with the alternate bid, how long will it, will the water be offline then?
My understanding is, we wouldn't have a service interruption with that alternate in there, that we could coordinate it so that it would be minimal disruption to the residents?
Would be during the night?
It'd be night work, and you'd, and they, we, what we would do would be similar to what we did with the water bypass at Lakeview. We would have everything ready to go, make sure the hole was dug, everything's prepped, ready, then we would shut water off, say, at 1:00 AM. I would venture to guess to put a valve in, maximum of three hours, so they could probably get it done a lot faster, but...
Okay, and so they would do it between 1:00, I thought I saw 1:00 AM and 5:00 AM.
Yep.
So...
Yeah, I mean...
So you're talking 3 to 5?
If we would happen to have to shut off, I mean, we'd be shutting off a large portion of the central area again. And last time, we did that when we had the Water Main break, we fired up well 5, thinking, hey, great, we've got this. And the water clarity was not good, and we did get a lot of phone calls, and we ended up in that sub-zero weather, doing a lot of flushing, and, you know, we had a lot of complaints.
And how are you gonna notify the residents, then, that their water is going to be shut off between 1 and 5?
What we would do is similar to what probably the Met Council did, we'd put it on our website, put it out on the Facebook page, and on our thing, but we would have to do some door hangers and door flyers, and make sure, mailing, you know, make sure it's well in advance, to let people know, I mean, to do it at night. We could maybe even ask them if they want to do an alternative bid, for do it during the day, you know, during, you know, say that 10 to 2 hour, like we did before, but just at night, it'd be just less interruption and a lot, you know...
I would assume it wouldn't be a whole lot less costly during the day?
No, it's the same amount of work. I mean, there'd be a little bit of, I mean, I'm sure you're paying a little bit more overtime hours for your guys, but it's, the work doesn't change.
Right, yeah. Okay.
But this, I mean, just to kind of look at, too, in the future, I mean, this would help us, you know, drastically in the future, too, if anything would ever happen. The main break occurred between Maple Leaf and Big Woods on the main stretch, and there are no valves, there is one at, at Big Woods, but there isn't none until you get down past Maple Leaf. But the line going up is before that, so, I mean, so there is no way to bypass around, so that's what this valve would do, we could shut off and isolate that area, and now we could bypass through with it, and keep them with water. Yes, they'd have a little reduced pressure, because we come, instead of a 20-inch main, we'd be feeding out the 12-inch through the neighborhood, but...
But also temporarily, right.
Except for the 2 hours, or whatever, it'd be off. And we would have to go out and re-flush some of the area, because we will get some drawback, you know, in the hydrants and flush, but, you know, but ultimately, in the, in the end, it'll help us down the line, too, for any future problems.
So, how many residents does this affect?
This would affect the entire central area, so everybody off of, if you come up, it would be the pinnacle area, the Sonder, north, north, and South Saunders area, Cardinal Cove, Manor, everything in there, everything in the central system. So, and then if we would, I think it actually would affect north...
Palmer Point?
No, it would affect everything north, though, from that, so everything in Woodland Cove, all the way down to Kings Point to the north.
To the north, yeah.
Would also be, because we would have to shut it off, you know, they would come through, but we'd have to shut it off, so some of that would be eliminated, too, in there.
But, so Palmer's Point and the rest of Woodland Cove, as well as Hunter's Crest and Turtle Creek?
Yes, everything else to the, to the east and south and west would be fine.
All right. Good, good question. Anybody else?
So, just kind of beyond this, well 5, given the quality of the water, is there any, what, I mean, I'm kind of thinking about the future, why would we have it? You know, is it, I mean, are we ever going to use it?
It's an, it's an option to look at, that we have well 4, which is also a very poor quality water, that it's, that is strictly for a backup. Well 5 is, right now, I mean, we're off the pressure tank there and stuff, and that's one of the other issues, the pressure tank itself, when it sits, not being used, you know, we're getting the rust kind of build up in there, too. It all depends on what happened in the near future for development in that area. There's property to the west there that would, you know, possible future development, you know, do you...
Gary, where's well 5?
That was in the South Saunders area, right off South Saunders Lake.
Oh, yes, yeah, okay.
So you come right in off of, it's right there.
Right, right in, right, off of 110, yeah.
That was what originally served that entire central area.
Right, okay.
And ever since I've been here, that, it's, it's been, you know, a tough, tough area for, you know, just because of the high iron content in there.
Okay.
But, I mean, for future development, I mean, once the new tower goes online, you're going to relieve a lot of stress on the plant and on Kings Point, which would help this end of town, too, because now that will be serving over there, eventually it'll have its own treatment plant and well down the road. But, you know, for, in the time being, while that, you know, that tower's in service, you'll be freeing up a lot of actually, you know, more free water to go the other way, too. So, we won't have, we'll have the same demand, but we'll have storage available there. So, in the near future, you know, do we look at, you know, when we build the new well, do we trade one in? Well 4 would be an option, because that is, you know, a very poor one, that's not used anymore. Well 3, we'll never give up, that's, I think, believe in the Mount Simon, and we don't ever want to lose a Mount Simon well.
What is well 5 in?
I believe it's the Franconia.
That's what I was going to say. Isn't well 4 in Franconia, too?
I believe so. Hang on one second, I can tell you.
Well, they're shallower, aquifers, I think that's why they're not quite as good a quality as the Simon.
Well 4, it's in the Hinckley.
Oh, Hinckley, okay.
And well 5 is, it just says Bedrock Glacial.
Mm-hmm, that's why, okay.
So, given this, the reason why I'm asking is, having this knowledge that well 5 is not very functional, I mean, it's functional, but it's not something we're considering, and we're actually incurring extra expense not to use it, does that build a case to put the new well in at the tower at the same time the tower's being built?
I don't know if there's any advantage to put it in now. We're looking more as a storage rate for now. The thing you would run into is, you know, how good is that water quality? You'd be blending again, so you might end up with the same situation that you have. Well 3 is very good water, so that's why we don't mind blending that a little bit more, where when well 4 was, it's terrible. As of now, probably not. I mean, we're, we'll probably be fine with the amount of storage that we'll have there. Once the treatment plant goes in, yes, definitely then. So I would say, let's save our money, wait and invest as we need it. You know, we always have that in our pocket, 4 and 5. I would probably keep 5 over 4, you know, in the time being, if we need to, if we really had to do a trade with, for the DNR, or whatever, you know, we could take everything and trade with 4. Because that's, we don't own the property, we're on Three Rivers property, where we do own well 5. And of course, for future development, maybe we hang on to 5, when, just in case all that property to the west goes, so...
Okay. All right, all right. Any other questions? So, are we in favor of awarding Parrot Contracting the award in the amount of, I think it's 93,000, I don't have it right in front of me.
93,523.
Yeah.
I think this is quite a bit more, is this in our budget? I mean, it's like 20,000 more, right?
I don't think we, this is repair of a break, so we didn't budget for this.
Right. It comes out of our waterfront.
Right.
I mean, it'll come out of our waterfront. And we always have, I mean, we always know we're going to have to make some repairs, so...
It might be a little over our repairs budget this year, maybe a lot over.
Yeah.
But we're, I mean, what do you do, you have to...
Yeah, we have...
Just tell them to come back next year.
Yeah. That's why we keep a healthy reserve in our waterfront. All right. Any other questions? None, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. A motion has been made to award the contract to Parrot Contracting in the amount of 93,453 for the repairs on Kings Point Road Water Main and Street Repair. Any further questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. So now, professional service agreement for the street improvement projects for City Project 1-20. So we had our open house with the neighborhood, it went very well, very well-attended, very happy to see so many people here and interested. It sounded to me that they were interested in having their roads improved. Big concern, of course, is the water runoff and how that's going to be addressed, so we'll have to work through those issues. And also, it sounded like they really are more in favor of the bituminous versus the concrete curb, which I'm to, from a city standpoint, since we would be paying 50% of those costs, I think we should go the less expensive route. So, Ms. Fowski?
Madam Mayor, thank you for summarizing. As you indicated, the open house today was well-attended, we heard some, got some great information from the residents. So, we prepared this presentation, or we prepared this proposal anticipating a positive outcome from the open house. And so it included for your consideration is professional services to prepare feasibility report and preliminary final plans and specifications for a reclamation project that includes Lakeview Drive, Margaret Circle, and Shady Lane. We've already got started on the force main work, so this would be done in conjunction. The final plans would include that force main work, but this proposal for you this evening is to prepare the components of the street, the street improvement project and the associated work with the Chapter 429 process. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have with this proposal or this proposed project.
Are there any questions? I just, I have one. So, the estimated repair cost for the sewer line and lift station is 140,000. But we also talked about what would it cost, or that a portion of the actual road construction project should come out of the, this, should come out of this sewer fund as well. And we were going to look at what proportion, percentage-wise, should be used for that, because had we not been doing this project, there would have been some costs associated with it as well. So, either way, you know, there would be some costs. So, I'm not opposed to the project, I think we should move forward with it, and at some point, we should determine how much of the street improvement project should be, how do you say, taken from the sewer fund.
Madam Mayor, that's an excellent point. Certainly with the feasibility report, we can, that can be part of the discussion, as can, that can be part of the discussion, as far as, as looking at financing options and proposed, proposed financing for each component of the work, and we're certainly more than happy to take a look at how, provide a recommendation to the council.
Okay.
For consideration in the feasibility report for financing alternatives.
Okay, any other questions?
So, are, in this report is, are all the comments from the residents taken in, such as a gentleman that lives down on, down in the cul-de-sac and the water all running down there, it looked like there would be some additional work done down there, so is that in the feasibility?
Well, that's certainly a component that we'll look into, so at the time that we prepared this, we didn't know those comments, and, and in all honesty, we, we prepare knowing that there's going to be some really good information that the residents share with us, so we had the gentleman at the cul-de-sac, we also got some information about old farm drain tile that we can look at, and that's certainly something that we encompass in our proposal when looking at a project such as this.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Otherwise, do I have a motion to pass Resolution Number 126-19 authorizing preparation of feasibility report, plan specifications, bidding and professional services for the 2020 Street Improvement Project, CPO 1-20, not to exceed $48,453?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made by Mr. Chumperlin and seconded by Mr. Maliter. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes 4-0. So next, we have our discussion regarding Halsted and Drive and North Arm Drive pavement. So we have the coring and, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, so it was good that we got some pavement corings back from Halsted and North Arm, you know, we were looking to do a mill and overlay project on those, on, particularly, we were focusing on Halsted Drive, the corings came back, not recommending that, that type of improvement for the majority of the road, there's a small stretch on that east-west portion that a mill and overlay would be a recommended street project, but the remainder of the streets is proposed for reclamation, and likewise, North Arm Drive came in with the corings, that a mill and overlay is not feasible, so with that information, wanted to get that information in your hands for your consideration on looking at a potential 2020 state aid project, included in the packet were a couple of options that the council may want to consider, we've talked about, for example, on North Arm Drive to do a ditch project, at this point, don't really have
Was that on North Arm? I'm sorry, oh.
It was on North Arm, wasn't it?
North Arm, yes.
Yeah, to do a ditch project, which is eligible to use state aid funds for that, I'm sorry.
North, North Branch.
Okay, that's what I thought.
My apologies.
Thank you.
In the packet, it's incorrect, option, option one would be North Branch Ditch Project, my apologies, so looking at what costs would be associated with that, would depend on how much material would need to come out, so we'd certainly need to take a look at if the council's interested in pursuing that project, we'd need to work with Public Works Superintendent Peters to determine how much material, get a high level estimate on how much material would need to be taken out, because that's, the majority of your cost is getting somebody, a contractor in there for the time to excavate that, and then also material trucked off the site. Another option that the council may want to consider is a reclamation project on Halsted or on North Arm, another option would be to look at a mill and overlay on Halsted as a short-term improvement, understanding that we wouldn't see the, the pavement life out of a mill and overlay on Halsted, just given the condition of it, but it would certainly improve, improve that roadway surface for a period of time, so.
Ms. Fowski, could I ask a question? So, you know, we had talked about last time, there's a whole list of roads that we thought we could do, there was a, some were mill and overlays, and some were just doing the one and a half or two-inch, whatever, repainting, not repainting, but overlay, and we said if we do overlays, I can't remember, it was one and a half, was it one and a half inches? Okay, if we do one and a half over, inch overlay on some of these roads, it could maybe get us another five to 10 years, and so my question would be, what if we did Halsted with this one and a half inch overlay, that could maybe get us another five to 10 years, and then you look at it at a total reclamation?
If, if that's something that the council is, is, would like to look at, it was presented as an option from the pavement specialists that were looking at the core, that you could certainly look at doing, you know, a short-term improvement, which would get you, you know, depending on how the pavement performs, five to 10 years or 10 years.
And what, what would the cost of that be, do you know?
I believe we were looking at, we were looking at an overlay for the whole area around $460,000.
When you say the whole area, what do you mean?
For that whole segment, so I, we were looking at a mill and overlay, which is similar to what we would be looking at under this alternative.
But the other.
But scaling back on the section, or?
Okay, so the, but the overlay, not mill and overlay, just the overlay would be a little bit less, or not?
I think we'd be looking at a comparable cost, because you have to mill at the side to get the, to match the pavement to the driveways through the corridor.
Okay, all right, so we're looking at about 400?
Correct.
Questions? Kind of a lot to digest, because we had thought we could do the mill and overlay on Halsted.
I think we were wishful thinking.
Yeah, wishful thinking.
I guess my initial thought is, I would be supportive of the ditch project.
Right, I would too.
I'm not so sure, I want to tackle reclamation on either one of these, I think there's other area, the ditch project wouldn't, you know, utilize state aid funds, which is what we want to do, reclamation, I just don't see these, especially, is it North Arm or West Arm, I guess?
North Arm would be the reclamation.
Right, I just don't see the traffic count to justify that, Halsted, as we've talked about, has its own issues with what was, what was done in the past, and I think 400,000 for a mill and overlay, or overlay is pretty steep for that section, so.
When I look back in the packet, I see a number from a couple packets, go 265,000 for Halsted.
I see that too, thank you.
Right.
Yeah, so the 400 didn't seem, that seemed way too high, so just, just for point of clarification.
Yes, thank you, I had the 400, the 400, the $458,000 as a reclamation cost for Halsted, as we've previously discussed, a mill and overlay of Halsted would be 265,000.
Okay.
Whether that changes anything or not.
So, okay, well, 265, yeah, it does, but.
And that's, that's a municipal state aid street.
Right, that, and this is, it would come out of MSA funds.
Yeah.
So my question is, 265, how, so we're saying whether it's a mill and overlay, or whether it's the one and a half or two-inch overlay, it's, cost-wise, it'd be about the same, which one would last longer? Are we saying both would last about five to 10 years?
Be two and a half and a two-inch overlay?
Well, well, what, we, we were talking, we've been talking about doing a one and a half inch overlay on some of these roads that are.
Some of them, you get by with just doing the overlay, but like this, like, like Ms. Fowski was saying, you'd have to do a mill, just you had to do edge milling on the sides, just because there's curbing in places, you had to start, you know, going in through with matching curbs, so, I mean, mill and overlay, you know, and if you're going to do that on Halsted, I would almost recommend that a two-inch, then it really, I mean, I don't think, you know, we can do a cost estimate both ways, but I don't know what your professional opinion is, if you're going to try to get as long a life as you can, let's do a two-inch on it and see how much life we can get out of this road, then the two-inch, you might be pushing 10 to 15 years.
Yeah, I think in this case, it's not really, you know, as we've been seeing before, you can do this overlay, or you can do the mill and overlay, here, I don't really see, it's not quite the black and white choice here, it's just kind of, it's.
Yeah.
Kind of a combo of the two.
So is there any appetite to do a mill and overlay for 265, knowing that it's, you know, 10 years, 12, 15, we're not sure.
At which time, we think we'll have buy-in that we can connect them to the city water, if we're going to reclaim that, because is that the issue we talked about?
Yeah, right, are you talking about buy-in now, or?
No, buy-in if we get five to 10 years off the mill and overlay, so in five to 10 years, when we probably will have to do the re, the reclamation.
Probably be closer to 10, but, yeah.
Because it is a rough stretch.
So then would we put in a moratorium then, if we did a mill and overlay?
Oh, absolutely, I would.
I think that's what council spoke about last time.
Yeah.
If this was, you know, we didn't know the results of the coring, but I think you had spoken about putting a moratorium on connections until this finished up. It's lifespan.
I don't see a cost for the ditch project, do you have an estimate on that? So we, we don't, just because we, we don't know how much material would have to be taken off the site, Superintendent Peters and I were discussing this, this afternoon, and, you know, ballpark, we'd be looking at between 50 and 100,000 dollars, depending on how much material, so that would be the neighborhood of what we'd be looking at to get that state aid fund balance down to a level where we could continue to accrue, that we wouldn't be having a penalty.
Penalized.
And that's an assessable process or project?
No.
No.
Why was, or was that North, because on page 151, under, well, it's listed under North Arm.
Yeah, it should be West Branch, and it's a gravel road.
Right.
And they're just doing some ditch improvements.
But it was stating there, assessment policy, this project would require feasibility study and public hearings.
Oh, that would be for North Arm.
That's, okay.
For a reclamation project.
Yeah, for a reclamation project, yeah.
Oh, okay, even though A is ditch project, but again, it's not North Arm.
Right.
Pardon me, North Branch. So the ditch project is North Branch?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ditch project, North Branch. Well, I think, we need to do the, I mean, I think we can do the North Branch project regardless, I think the only question is, and I don't know, I agree with Mr. Maliter, I, this coming year, I don't know that we want to tackle North Arm, we will have to tackle it sooner or later, but I'm not sure in 2020, we want to tackle it.
Right, I, I guess, to summarize, I'd be, again, supportive of the ditch project and North Branch, and I think the, the modified mill and overlay on Halsted probably makes sense, I do agree with Mr. Peters about probably putting a two-inch overlay, just to, to get the most out of it.
Right.
You know, in, in a perfect world, probably wouldn't go with that, but I think utilizing MSA funds as well as seeing some consistency on at least the road surface for that entire stretch, including what we just put, just makes for a, a better overall straight.
Okay, I would support that.
I would support that as well.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so ditch project and a two-inch overlay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the guidance.
Okay.
Overlay, whatever we're calling it, or something.
Yeah, whatever we're calling it.
Edge mill, overlay, mill and overlay, what, some variant of that.
Street improvement project.
Do you need a motion, or just direction?
Just direction is fine at this point, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right, all right, good. Staff reports, Mr. Barone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council, I just got a few items to, to mention, I'll start off, you all drove onto our new parking lot, they've put the final lift down on Friday and striped it over the weekend, so it looks great, I wouldn't say it's like a Christmas present, but it's pretty darn nice for city staff and visitors to City Hall to be able to use a nice parking lot like that. I did want to touch on a few other things, one item, will involve Mr. Beatty here, but we'll get to that at the end of my items, so, was approached, actually, Ms. Tabor and I were approached by MediaCom, and they were asking us if they, if we could provide a letter of support to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, they're looking to try to find underserved areas via grants, and so we wrote a letter of, of support in that, I wrote, I wrote that last week, the deadline was last Friday, which is why you guys didn't get a chance to, to vote on it, this accrues us an additional five or 10 points, I forget what Zach told us, but nonetheless, it helps us to, and they gave us a template to use, so this particular grant is for the Farm Hill Road area, so that currently doesn't, lacks broadband access, and so hopefully, they'll be successful, and at least this letter will hopefully get us closer to that, so if that's the, the case, we'll find out, I'm sure, down the road. And then our next council meeting will be in three weeks, we have a five Monday month this month of September, so we don't meet again until October 7th, and then the final item has to do with the information that came up, as we were talking about the comp plan, and I separated this one out, because this was something that Mr. Beatty was able to help us with, versus Eric Swaber from WSB, and those will be coming back to the council in October, but I thought I'd ask Mr. Beatty, and I did put this in your, in my staff report, that I attached to the packet, the back and forth between Ms. Bruce and myself and Mr. Abel, and then the reply from Mr. Beatty, so if you don't mind taking a minute or two to kind of summarize the, the questions that she had on the, on the legislation related, the statutes, I would appreciate it.
Sure, Madam Mayor, Council, well, as you see, Ms. Bruce sent an email, I think, a week ago, over the weekend, asking, or pointing out that there had been an amendment to the statute a couple of years ago, dealing with system statements, and asking, I'm pointing that out, and asking, in effect, what the significance of that was in regard to where the city is with, considering its comp plan amendment, and my answer in, in the email is that it really has nothing to do with that, because the section that she was pointing out dealt with system statements, that's, that's something that comes out early in the process of considering the dicennial comp plan amendments. System statement is sort of the Met Council's general guideline of, of development, they amend those every once in a while, but each 10 years, as the dicennial census, or a comp plan amendment is upcoming, the Met Council sends out an individualized system statement for each community, it sort of summarizes whatever changes have occurred in the general system statements, and also gives some individual information for the community, population estimates and so forth, to guide the, the comp plan amendment that will be occurring over the next year or two. The, Minutrista's system statement came out in September of 2015?
Fifteen.
The statute says that you get 60 days to challenge that, it lays out a process, well, obviously, we're way past 60 days after September of 2015, so it's the wrong statute to be dealing with, where we're at in the process is the end of, of the whole thing, where the city has put together its comp plan, it's been approved by Met Council, and if, if there is a dispute at that point about, between the Met Council and a city with regard to its comp plan, we're talking not about the system statement, we're talking about a contested case hearing, which is an entirely different statute. Secondly, there were a couple of confusing amendments, going back to the system statement section, a couple of confusing amendments, one that actually overlapped the other one, but in both cases, they were for system statements that were going to be effective, one in 2018 and one, I think, January of 2019, again, going back to ours, hours long predated that, so those changes would not have affected us, thus, none of that really has anything to do with where we're at.
Thank you.
I believe that's all I had, except the one thing I did want to touch on, Mr. Peters is going to talk a little bit about the storm cleanup and the costs associated with that, I believe the city council at a previous meeting this year, said, we were talking about tree fund and stuff, and the tree fund has generally been looked at as, as something where you plant trees, but as brought up by, I believe, Mr. Maliter and the council agreed, it's also going to be used to clean up trees, so he'll give you a quick overview on what those costs are, and I believe there really wasn't a way to get your approval of this, so we're just going to administratively address these costs back to the tree fund, because it was for generally tree cleanup from the storm slash tornado that we had on Labor Day, so I'll let Gary quickly talk about the costs incurred. So, I'll let Gary quickly talk about the costs incurred.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. Madam Mayor, Council, what we had was basically, one, two, three, four, five, five, pretty much, five or six days of cleanup, include, well, a little bit on the Monday night of Labor Day, which we only just came in and opened everything up. We ended up clearing 15 to 20 properties of debris. Two to three of the properties brought their brush here, which really helped us a lot. We did issue three to four burn permits. Once people found out that they could actually kind of burn on-site on their own property, they were, went no, fit no charge. They thought that was great, you want to take care of it there. We did do 14 tandem loads of chips that we chipped of the brush. It was taking a long time, so we started hauling the brush here to the burn pile here. We did roughly, I believe Randy said it was 28 or 29 tandem loads of brush that we brought here. The burn pile was kind of going, we just kept adding to it a little bit all day, and pretty much it's all gone, which is great. We had a total of 159 regular hours, 32 hours of overtime, and a rough estimate, Brian will check my numbers and stuff, but a little over $5,500 in cost for the cleanup.
So, Gary, I just want to add to this. Several people mentioned to me that you guys did a fantastic job. They said kudos to you guys. They were so impressed. They actually noticed that Hennepin County had their work crew out there and had like 10 guys, and did half as much work as you guys, with only a few. So, they just were very, very impressed, and they said, please pass this on to Public Works, you did a phenomenal job, your response and, and just everything. They were just very, very pleased. So, good job, good job.
Thank you, pass on to the crew. Those guys work hard and are great.
Yep, they do.
Yeah, we got stronger guys in Hennepin County.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so.
So I wanted to, one last kind of item related to this, quickly. So, when I got here, it's been 10 years ago, the policy was, you're on your own. So we never really have, we don't have a policy on what we'll do and what we won't do. And so I've asked Mr. Peters to do some research, and I'm sure between he and I, and, you know, we'll try to eventually bring something back to the city council that will kind of direct us, what we will do, what we won't do. Because what we don't want to be in the business is of, you know, doing entire cleanups on people's property from, you know, front to back, you know? But there has to be some, but we're more than happy to help. But like I said, when I got here 10 years ago, the policy was, you're on your own. And we've modified that over the years, because it, you know, we've seemed to have more events, and there are, seems to be more storms that take down trees and brush and fences and whatever. So, so you'll probably be seeing sometime, something like that over the winter months. You know, we're not in a hurry now, but generally, if it's near the property line, these guys will grab it, so.
All right.
So do we know, does Hennepin County have something like that, that, in that, of course, they were working right down 15?
Yeah, county roads, yeah.
And so those are Minutrista residents, and the stuff wasn't laying on the road, but what did they do and?
And we will definitely ask them what their policy is. There's going to be a little different, that's because of being from a county perspective, but we'll just, you know, tap some other cities on the shoulder about what they use for policies and try to see what fits for us and works best. Because, you know, we don't mind helping, these guys don't mind helping, they got other things they could do, but they don't mind helping when, you know, that's what we're in the business of, is helping people. So, but we just don't want to have this end up being 10 and 20, $30,000 worth of stuff, so. So, I think this is a nominal cost, considering some of the storm damage we had here, so.
Ms. Trump, to answer your question, we did most of 115. So, yeah, the county, the county did do some, and just to kind of open it up, but we did, for most of the residents down there, we did most of theirs.
Yep. Okay, great. Any other staff reports? So, real quick, I, I'll give a quick report. The Gillespie Board meeting was moved to next week. I did attend the Northwest League meeting, and it was very well-attended. We didn't have a speaker, we just did city updates. And interestingly enough, one, besides Medina, we are one of the lowest, at least those at the table, lowest tax rates. Medina was just a couple hairs below us. And also, very interesting, most of the growing cities, I was surprised, their increase, their levy increases were anywhere from seven all the way up to 15%. So we were actually, as a growing city, not all of them, but as a growing city, we were actually on the lower end with our 5.9. Some of the smaller cities, like Maple Plain and, I think Loretto even had a pretty significant hike, but Long Lake, they're not growing, they're very small communities, they either had a one or a zero or flat rate increase. But still, we were right, we're actually on the lower end. So, anyhow, with that, that's it for me. Ms. Mortensen?
WCC meeting is on the 19th, and it is being held at the Gillespie Center, and it is an evening event this time.
The last LMCD meeting was canceled, so the next one will be next week.
And we'd have two Pioneer Sarah Creek Watership meetings this week. Tomorrow, the subcommittee meets to go over the responses we got for the requests from the engineering firms. And then on Thursday, the 19th, is our regular mutling meeting.
Anything else? Otherwise, Brian, you're almost on target. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Mortensen made that motion, and Mr. Malater seconded. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion passes 4-0. You were off by a minute.